Okay, very good. Like I said, we'll call the meeting into order. This is the November meeting. The TIP City Board of Education. And we'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
So joining us today from Ms. Ashburn's class, we have Toby Hoover, Caleb Bokey, Jacob Harshberger, and Aubrey Davis. Kids, you want to go ahead and start with the pledge?
I have my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Venters.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mr. Spanner.
Present.
All present counted for, sir, there is a court concealed.
In that case, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, the superintendent for courts.
All right, well, the first thing I want to do is thank our community for their support in November 10. We had a solid, good win, and we were extremely happy about that. This levy that has just passed, which is a renewal, provides for competitive salaries and definitely helps keep property values up in our community. So, we appreciate that, being a solid quality Y3 tip that we so much enjoy, and definitely having great teachers and staff in our schools. So again, thank you. I want to also acknowledge Linda Ayres, as well as Michelle Watkins, that are the co-chairs for the Community Levy Committee, dedication from community members, and boulders across our districts what made this happen. So, thank you. Thank you all very much, as well as our staff and all those that worked on that endeavor. Item two happens to be a very fun one. It's about our fall sports update, as well as a look at our state champions, our soccer Division II. We're extremely proud of them. They're here with us this evening. And we did have a very, very wonderful fall, a very successful fall for all of our sports. A number of MVL, that's our conference champions, and quite proud of that. But I think the paramount piece happens to be our boys soccer that worked very, very hard, had some very close games, some exciting moments, but certainly became the state champions for Division II for the state. You see this lovely trophy here that I'm sure many, many schools would love to have it in their possession, and we are so fortunate that it's home, it's here in TIP. So I'm going to let our coach, would you like to, coaches, would you like to say a word to?
Yeah, I would say thanks to the community, which we talked about, and it's probably one of the biggest events, especially for these guys who've ever sort of lived through, and they'll always remember it, you know, especially as coaches too, and ED. You know, it's something that doesn't come around every often, you know. It's been close several times, but you know, this is the first time. First team to ever go through an undefeated season in the history of boys soccer at TIP City.
Wow.
So, congratulations to them. They did.
All right, any other comments? We have beautiful posters here.
One thing that we did want to share with the Board of Education and the community this evening is from generous donation from Myers. They have supplied us with a championship banner that we will proudly display in the gym this winter. And then weather permitting, we'll move this down to the stadium for next fall and display as we are going to be the defending state champions next year.
Awesome.
I'll just add, when you make a bet in the summertime about whether between you will not win a state title, when your player, Jake Rowland, follows you with his ending bargain, make sure, even on the night where you come to the school board here in May.
Luckily, it wasn't before the wedding.
I know, right.
That would not have been a good thing, right?
You were nice to let him do it after.
Yeah, I took the same bet.
Thank you for making it.
All right, well, gentlemen, I'd love for you to just forward and hold the trophy and make sure that our community has a great picture of you for those that will be giving it home later on. We are very, very proud of you, and so excited that you will just win home for our community. Vidia, it's not a still, it's video.
We're good? We're good, Jack? You look good, though. All right, that's that. Are we good?
I know you have busy schedules and a lot going on, and I really appreciate you taking time out this evening. You may be excusing this time, but do thank you very much.
Bye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hard work. Well done. Well, it's kind of hard to follow that.
All right, well, as I said, what a happy, upbeat piece to share with our community. And we're going to continue on. We have two speakers here this evening, both Mrs. Schmidt from the high school, as well as Hannah Gress, that serves both Broadway and Nemocopic Elementary as school counselors. And they're going to give us just an update on health and wellness, mental health wellness in our school district.
Well, good evening. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity to talk about kind of where we are as a school counseling department with the mental health and wellness. So, we're just going to kind of go over these talking points and the handout provided. District-wide developments. This is our first year partnering with New Creation Partnership, where we have two mental health counselors that come into the high school two days a week and the middle school two days a week, and then serve LT Ball. There's one student being seen there. And sixteen students overall are seen regularly between the middle school and high school. We do have a couple referrals coming from the elementary, which Hannah will talk about in a little bit. But those are just the students they're seeing regularly. This doesn't count the students that they've helped us assess. You know, unfortunately with suicide assessments, threat assessments, things of those nature. So it's been a huge benefit having them in our buildings and in our district. The other talking point, professional development. We were fortunate enough that on the same day that there was a professional development day here at TIP, there was also a day provided by the University of Dayton, where there was a mental health PD at Dayton Children's. So all six of us counselors got to go to that. And here about just kind of the updates at Dayton Children's and what happens when a student or a child is sent to Dayton Children's for any kind of assessment. We also learned about some prevention programs that are going on as well. On that same day here at TIP, there was QPR training done for staff grades six through twelve. And that was, I think, Mr. Verhoff and Mrs. Tui were the ones who arranged that. We are attempting to partner with Miami and Montgomery County ESCs in order to do some social-emotional professional development for not only counselors, but also our teachers. That's kind of our next thing that we're looking into. Specifically at the high school, Hope Squad is a new program at the high school that will launch in January 2020. I attended a conference on November 5th, and I was able to network with other schools that were there. It was really interesting because it wasn't just advisors, it was actually students from other districts that are in the program. In mid-November, myself along with two other teachers went to advisor training and got the full training to go ahead and launch the program. Lastly, what I'll talk about is I told Ann that I would represent the middle school. I know that she also attended the conference, the Hope Squad Conference, as that would be something we'd like to see once we get it up and going and seeing how it's working at the high school, that we'd like to do at the middle school. They're also exploring possible curriculums for suicide prevention. The two that she mentioned were Second Step and Erica's Lighthouse. And lastly, this is something that I think Ann started last year with a couple teachers, an administrator and school nurse, is they do a grief group. They call it Chefs at TMS, and they explore topics related to grief. But while they're doing that, they're looking at kind of a coping strategy. So those are kind of the developments district-wide, and through the high school and middle school. I'm going to be talking K through five, so for Nemocopic, Broadway, and LT Ball. I, myself, am at Nemocopic and Broadway, and Brett Elliott is the counselor at LT Ball. So for LT, he does some anxiety small groups. So he has fourth and fifth graders focusing on coping skills, managing their anxiety. He uses cognitive behavioral strategies to work on reducing fears and stressors. He also does a grief group that will start in the second half of the year. So for those students who have lost a loved one, they'll use activities in art to kind of help them use those coping skills. He does individual counseling for social and behavioral concerns. And then he mentioned he has one student being seen with the New Creations Counseling. As far as Nemocopic and Broadway, do some monthly targeted lessons. So from teacher needs assessments and parent needs assessments, we kind of target specific positive school behaviors and just different things that are perceived issue for students and things that we see, to kind of focus on those. We also do Character Club and something that is called Kindness Camp, and it promotes inclusion and understanding and accepting of diversity among our students and our learners. And then some small group counseling. So I do a self-control group, a worry group, and friendship groups. And the worry group is going specifically really well this year. That's a big one. I have three students that are referred to New Creations, so we're kind of waiting on those to go through. And then in March, we're going to try something different called the Healthy Habits Week. In the past, we've done Red Room Week. But this year, we're going to try and switch it up and focus on some healthy habits for life and tie some career stuff in there, too.
Very nice job. I wanted to, I think you mentioned this a bit, but would you, Christine, highlight the piece with Miami University that were part of the group?
Yes. Sorry to include that. So Miami University is kind of a cohort that I'm a part of. It's all done through email, but it is just a wealth of information that explores topics, some that are always pertinent to the high school level, but then I'm able to pass that on to the other counselors. Just a few topics have been bullying, cyberbullying, a new thing. And I think Hannah's done a really good job doing this with the elementary is mindfulness. There's a whole topic on that, and kind of how can you create a mindful space in your school, in your classroom, those kinds of things. And those are just some of the topics. But it is, I wish I could be a little bit more participatory in the group, and it was every day. Instead of getting an email, there's articles, there's... And what's nice is I'm able to participate in a conversation, and it's all over the state of Ohio, and just getting good ideas. One topic that was really interesting, too, is self-care for counselors and for educators, too. That was really helpful to read and pass along. And so that, that was something that I think Dr. Compton and Mr. Verhoff were able to find, and I'm very happy to be a part of it just because I don't have the time to really find these resources. So for someone to just forward it on to me, and then I'm able to share it with my colleagues has been very, very helpful.
Very nice. Any questions that you have for them? You've done a nice job this evening, very nice job.
I have a question about number three regarding the Hope Squad at the junior high level, because I questioned it quite a bit at the high school level when we were in last time. So what kind of data do we have that tells us a middle school student would be able to carry that kind of a burden?
I mean, as far as data, I mean, it's going on in numerous middle schools in the state. Just to speak, I know a lot of the Cincinnati schools, Beaver Creek, Coy Middle School, I believe is one. As far as, I don't know if they're doing as much of, like, when the high school gets trained, they're getting trained in things just as QPR. The curriculum is tailored to the middle school student. I mean, Hope Squad goes as far down as elementary schools. So instead of being like, it being suicide prevention, I think at the elementary and middle school, it's more like how to be a good peer, how to be a good listener of those things. So I don't know per se if there's any data that, but I know that the curriculum is is less heavy than it is at the high school level.
And that's my point, because a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade student is dealing with their own social-emotional needs. And so if a peer comes and tells them what they're going through, now you've just burdened that other student with that, and I think that's a lot to ask of a student.
Sure.
So I would be very hesitant, without doing a lot of research, to think that would be a good fit for our district. I just, I would want to know a lot more.
Yes, and there's definitely a lot more, I think that, you know, and that's why it's something, like, we're not officially launching at the high school until January. That was our launch date given by Grant Us Hope, which funds Hope Squad. And so we would definitely have to have it pretty well figured out at the high school for us to even explore the middle school. I do, what's nice is the fact that we have our relationship already with Hope Squad, and our liaison, like, she's already started to send me what the middle school curriculum looks like, free of cost, just so that we, if it is something that we feel is appropriate for us or not. So we kind of already have an in, someone that would be able to sit down with us more so and look at it and see if it's appropriate for our district.
Okay, and parents still do have to sign off on that, right?
Yes, there's a parent orientation. So once students are nominated, which we'll be doing that in December, the parent orientation will take place in January. And then after that, a parent has the say of whether they want to let their child participate or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I want to thank you both for coming this evening. Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Gress. They do a nice job in that they represented your counseling cohorts very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, the next item is threat assessment training. And I just wanted to highlight that all of our buildings are having teams prepared for the threat assessment. That is sponsored through the Sandy Hook Promise. And across the state, there are some funds that have now been appropriated for the wellness and the mental health piece, as well as the connection for safety assessment. And so as a district, we decided we would jump in. We're going to be training here in the Dayton area. We want to take advantage of that instead of needing to travel to Columbus or farther distance. And the state's hope is that in two years, they will have all of districts trained. So we're kind of on the front end of this. There are some components that we had seen similar in other threat assessment sessions, but this one was very comprehensive and well-done. And we have had three buildings so far trained, and then by our December break, we'll have our other two's trained. We will create a district threat assessment team. We have had both of, we've had two officers, TIP City Police Officers, that have attended the training now. And we also have New Creations Counseling Center this training that's attending the training. So they will be part of the district team. Any questions on that? And the next one is connected to our food service. So Nutrition Standards Center schools, and I've asked Mr. Pfister if he just could comment for us.
Okay, so the state now has a requirement that we are required to report to the board that as a school district, we follow all the USDA guidelines, requirements for school food service. We have Board Policy Number 8500 that is pretty in-depth as far as fills out what we're required to do as a school food service program. But it also goes outside of the lunchtime. The state, the feds, in their infinite wisdom, have said a school day runs from midnight until thirty minutes after the last bell rings. So during that timeframe, any school or any food that is sold at school must follow USDA regulations. There's a smart snack calculator. We have to put anything through that anybody's going to try to sell. We do have all of our snacks and all the card items in lunch, but if somebody wants to have a bake sale, or a fundraiser, or anything like that, it has to go through these regulations.
That's why we have no more bake sales anymore.
That's exactly why. That's exactly why. So they now require us to come in front of the board and tell you that we are following these. And so that's what I'm doing. I'm telling you we're following these things to the best of our ability. I have five kitchen managers that care deeply and passionately about providing great food for our kids. Sometimes the standards that are out there make that a little bit more difficult than what we would like, but we try to follow them as best as we can.
Great. Thanks for following the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfister. All right, curriculum update. As you might have noticed, Mr. Verhoff is under the weather this evening. So I'll just do a very quick highlight that the social space curriculum team continues to need it, both elementary up through our high school. They're making great progress. They are doing some visitations to other schools, some side visits, and learning from others about what they're doing and what kind of curriculums that they're using. And it's a great time to do that when you're studying the curriculum. And he will be back in December, and I'm sure he will expand upon that. But just want to let you know that's moving forward at a very good pace. OSBA highlights. So we attended OSBA here in just the past few weeks, and I know that we had several board members that attended that. We had Mrs. Heatherly, and Mrs. Dunaway, and Mrs. Dahl. All were there. Also, we had our newest board member that's coming onboard, Mrs. Corr, was in attendance there. But it's a great place to be able to attend as far as a conference. It's very large. It has so many, this is a booklet that's from that, so you can see just the vast number of stations that's available across a wide variety of topics and from a wide variety of school districts. So it's a great place to learn from each other and connect. I know that Mrs. Robbins put out a stack of our faculty profiles so others could see what we're doing here. But earlier in years, when we were just getting ours off the ground, we began looking at what other districts were doing as well. It's just a nice exchange and collaboration of school districts across the state, as well as school boards. So just as far as highlighting, I know Mrs. Dahl had one particular station that she found very interesting and wanted to give her a minute.
I can't access my email tonight, but there was, which I probably need to just tell.
Her computer does not work. Her Chromebook has not been able to fire up the whole time. Not working.
But there was one on Lean Six Sigma, and it's first started an industry about problem solving and collaboration. And they offer, like, they come in and they first work with a group of teachers, and then they get credentialed, and you solve real problems, whatever problems that you find in the district that you would like to solve. And they walk you through this process of solving, becoming problem solvers. And then you can also then, once your credentials go back at the high school level, and then it works to get our kids one of those new industry standards on their diploma. So I just thought it'd be a really neat thing if we could bring into TIP to make groups of teachers, whoever, it can be any staff, that want to become problem solvers and look at things that are going on that we can do better in our district.
That's fun.
But I don't have my email, so it'll, as I get more information, I'll pass it on.
Okay, that sounds great. And I know, Mr. Verhoff, that sounds like a curriculum-connected piece.
Oh, absolutely.
That's awesome.
Good. Anyone else have anything that they particularly wanted to highlight?
I did. I served as the TIP City representative for the OSBA delegate assembly, and we adopted information into their language. And two of the highlights that I thought I would share was to support legislation that provides funding for and implementation for trauma and poor treatment and program development. So that would be something that we can look at developing as funding is being dedicated for that. And also throughout their bylaws, their rules, they also replace the language related to the education of students with unique educational needs. And that's going to be replacing the term "special education."
So I think what we're looking at? Unique educational needs.
Instead of using the term "special education," we'll be using "unique," special, or "unique educational needs" or "students with unique learning needs." So as we do policy adoption from here forward, you should probably see that type of language coming forward.
Did the feds already adopt it? Is that what they?
I'm not sure.
Because I'm just wondering if that reflects like a change in our DVA that, do you know?
I think it's part of the ESAPs, the movement toward that. And as far as federal, I don't know if that's been fully adopted there yet. I know Neola has not brought it to us just yet, so it will be coming.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, is do we have a need to then alter our policy and the language in our policies? And they said it would be forthcoming.
Just two sessions that I'll highlight very quickly. One was on communications. And actually, Mrs. Robbins and I happened to both be sitting in on that. And in the end, I told her what a great affirmation, because many of the things that were being highlighted are direction skills and I would say guidance that she provides our district. So that was very affirming. Also, he was a very strong presenter. And so he did have a good little card that had just some basic points on that as we were working with media and news releases. And even as she would have what I recall almost like a crisis or a very urgent message that you're trying to get out to the community, what are some of the things that you want to make sure that you focus in and how you want to approach that. So that's always good information, and like I said, it ended up being some good affirmation for us as well. I was able to go to one of the sessions that was provided about the Hope Squad, knowing that we have one that's just starting up here. They did have a student panel with that, and they did a very nice job. And so it gave me encouragement about students that were not feeling stressed, that were participating in it. So I'm hopeful that, you know, it'll be something that we will monitor closely. But for that particular district that was presenting, I think that that is providing a good fit and being a helpful tool for them. So we'll just kind of have to continue to monitor and definitely make notes so that our teams here, particularly our counselors that are working with this, that they have that contact just for insights about how they handle different things, or if we have questions that surface that that might be a good go-to for them. All right, anything else?
Oh, I just, I mean, this was my fifth time going, so I just did a lot of case law update, policy update, just, you know, more kind of drilling down. And yeah, so that's what I did. It was very, it was very well worth it, so.
Good, good. And those things are always constantly changing.
Absolutely, yep.
Just that we have titles that change for programs, so it is a lot to stay up on. All right, and finally, the senior citizens' holiday breakfast that we host, that's coming up, and we're excited about that. December the 19th, it will begin at 9:00 a.m., and that will be at LT Ball at our intermediate school. There's great parking there. And for senior citizens, well, I know a number of them have already put in a reservation, in other words, their intention to attend. Certainly, you can come that day if something changes in your schedule and you didn't turn in. But it is extremely helpful to us, just so that we make sure that we have the supplies and the breakfast items so that we are able to share with everyone. So it helps with our planning, and we look forward to it. Our students do a great job of providing some entertainment that morning, everything from our early elementary at K-1 all the way through to the high school. So it's just a wonderful community connection, and it certainly seems like us senior citizens here in the community enjoy it. I think with that, I am finished unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, citizens' comments. And we have Mr. Don Watson here tonight to address the board. As always, Don, we have a five-minute.
Five minutes.
Five minutes time, right? Everything will put it on there. When he starts, I'll push the button.
Give you a thirty-second warning or fifteen-second warning?
Okay.
Good enough.
Have you started?
Yes.
Okay. Usually when I speak about something at the school board meetings,
I speak about an aspect of truth. The reason is to get the community to trust what you're telling them. After fifty-two years attending athletic events in TIP City, I've made a lot of friends with coaches and students. You saw tonight the highlight of a thirty-eight-year trying to be the state champs, and we're there. I went to the celebration at the gym, and the sad thing... I went to the celebration at the gym and the sad thing, we're here and I don't want to say anything I'm going to say now, but I feel in my gut, I owe it to the kids that were here tonight. At the celebration, one player said, "It's not what you say, it's what you do." And they showed us that. But after the celebration, I mingled with the boys and seven of them told me that they enjoyed it. And I said, "Well, basketball's next and we should, should have had a good team this year, but seven of those players you saw tonight aren't playing this year because of the coach." And that's what they told me personally. That's seniors. There's three more that's not playing that were JV players. So we're not going to enjoy a very good basketball season. Not that I don't like the kids that's on the team. As you saw in the TIP paper, there's only five kids on JV. Some of the kids that are on varsity, they didn't even play last year at JV. So they're on varsity this year because of lack of players. And nothing's been done about it. I don't know the basketball coach. I don't know why they say because of his actions they can't go out. I talked to four, five mothers at the celebration and they told me the same thing their sons told me. So they say they're not speaking out because in the past, there's been some repercussions to students, even as much as not being able to walk in graduation. So I think it's time the school board does an investigation and looks into this and probably so it's, should be an outside investigation so we don't have any hidden agendas going on. I might say we just, the school board voted to spend sixteen thousand dollars to get two hundred more votes on to build a new school. I'm not against building new schools, but I want the right plan and I think that's what they'll find out. So you got twenty-eight more negative votes, so you're up to two hundred and twenty-eight because of nine parents, spouses included. So that would be of the, of the kids, I'm sorry, my math's off, twenty more. I went to the Troy Concord Open Community Schools. They're building in March. I found out that they have different figures than we've been told at the meetings. They said that the increase in inflation was ten percent. We were told from May to August that it went up almost twenty-five percent. Oddly, it's the same architect group, so I think it's time for you to look at a different architect. I've mentioned to you before that my CPA says he's a shouser because he cost the Bethel School District two million more dollars. And I believe my CPA. They're building four elementary schools at about twice the square footage for ninety-eight million. Ours in August was up to forty-four million and that didn't include remodeling for LT Ball, which is five more million. So we're up to forty-nine million for half the square footage. You're getting this all down, Nancy. It's the truth. And so I think it's time that we do some reshuffling. And my friends on the board, Joe Allen, Teresa, and Corinne, you're the ones be back in January. And I think, I know both, two of you like the plan we did now, but it's an add-on for a lot more money than the school district next to us is spending. So I could go in deeper. I'll wait till next month because my time is probably up.
That was right on the dot, man.
You're getting good at that third, at that, at that five minute, it's like, you have like an inner clock.
I had a minute and it was done.
I wanted to clarify, Troy is going on the ballot. They haven't passed that yet.
Pardon?
Troy is going on the ballot to request a plan to build four new elementaries. They haven't passed it yet.
No, I was just a group meeting.
I just wanted to clarify that statement.
He's just been attending the meetings and he's getting feedback.
I might add some, one thing they had that I, speaking for Liz here. When you listen to this from the cable news or whatever, you can't hear it. They have a little instrument that they hold that you could, everyone could be heard. And also people online could, could get on and come in with questions while the citizens comment, so.
Can I comment too? I didn't get to sign one.
Did you want to?
There's still a lot of seconds.
Yeah, you can, yeah, go ahead.
Am I next then?
Yeah, you're the only other one.
Can you sign this at least?
I will.
A lot of boards have microphones that each person's thing so that you can hear, like each board member has a microphone.
Well, I don't think I have that problem. Most people have.
Well, I'm just saying for, here we go. I don't have that problem either, Don, you know.
Okay, you started me? Okay, again, I'm going to ask, bring up TPA, TIP Pride. I don't know if anybody's here tonight. I think somebody from TIP Pride should be at every board meeting to update you guys on what they're doing to raise funds for this supposed stadium that I don't think they're raising funds for. I requested notes and emails from the board. I have not yet gotten those. And I also, the money that Premier sends us, which I, Premier's on the, on the new business tonight, so I'm anxious to hear about these donations from Premier again. But as long as they know they're all going to the football stadium and not to any of the other sports activities that go on in TIP City because that's where that money is all going. I don't know how they pay the athletic trainer. We're supposed to pay the athletic trainer out of that money. And one other thing I thought was, which I read again in their agreement is that they have naming rights for the stadium. So people keep asking what the stadium's going to be called. Well, unless you have something else with the city, the stadium will be called Premier, Upper Valley, whichever. Because they have naming rights because you're getting all this money out of the school bank account to the stadium. And then somebody asked me about the Edison check when they stood out in front of the football game with this Edison check. So I contacted somebody up at the president's office at Edison and they said, "No, they didn't give any money." They support TIP schools, always have supported TIP schools and do support them. But that night, there was no money on the check because there was no money. So that was, and they said that that was just to get people excited again about giving to TPA because there was no money. It was just a rally call because TPA needed to raise some money. I've emailed a few people at TP, at the TIP Pride, but you don't get anything back from them either. So once again, I'm trying to find out what TIP Pride is doing to raise this money so we can get, stop taking it out of the school's funds. Because once that comes from Premier, that seventy-five hundred comes from Premier, is seventy-five thousand comes from Premier each year. It's supposed to be for all the kids and all the sports programs, not just football. And it also makes me wonder why we have tennis courts on the school plan. Because if Premier gives that money for sports, then why do you guys have it on this new school you want to build? You're moving the tennis courts from one place to the other. You could do that with this money from Premier that's supposed to be for all school athletes. And I also wanted to say with Don speaking out, absolutely. I mean, that's why people call me and say, "Hey Kathy, can you go to a meeting and say something?" Because if I speak out, my kid is going to get in trouble. And I've been there. I had two kids that went through TIP and I spoke out and yes, my kids were treated very poorly, very poorly. So, and as far as building a new school, I am not against it. But then when you guys sit up here and say how bad these schools are, I wonder why we have an open door policy? And we invite children from other schools into our terribly bad, you know, broken down schools that, you know, our kids shouldn't be sitting in, so why should their kids? So I just, just have a couple of those questions. I just don't, don't understand that, you know, the stuff with TPA, I don't understand. I, I don't think they're doing their job. I don't know what they were formed for, other than maybe to a shell game. I don't know. Are they hiding money? Are they not hiding money? Are they just there so money can pass through the school system and taxpayers don't under, you know, don't know they're paying for everything? Because we said as, as taxpayers, we weren't going to keep building schools and build a stadium too. That our money was going for the education of the kids and the schools. And here we have TPA supposed to be getting this money for us and I don't think they are. And I don't think anybody from the school board gives a rat's batoot because nobody's questioning them. Nobody's, nobody from TPA is sitting in here at the board meetings and saying, "We raised this money" or "We, we have these three projects we're going to do to try to raise some money." There's no, I, I've been to many of these meetings and never see anybody from TPA, never. So as a school board, I, I think you're kind of letting us down, not investigating, not figuring out what TPA is supposed to be doing and, and why they're not doing their thing. And I, like I said, I'm still waiting on stuff from the school board for these TPA emails and whatnot that you guys get back and forth to say what's going on. So with my time running out, I guess I'll see you next month.
Okay. Moving on to the president's comments here tonight. Not a lot to add, as usual, but I would note it's an awfully busy time of year for everybody. I know certainly for the teachers and the staff and the board office, certainly for the parents. So I'm happy to announce that Thursday, everybody can take that day off and enjoy Thanksgiving. So hopefully everybody will be able to gather with their families this week and have some time to rest, so. That's, that's all I have for president's comments. We'll move on for the approval of minutes. And there's been a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen special meeting and October twenty-eighth regular meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any corrections for Dave?
I will move to that Mrs. Heatherly mentioned to me. On the October twenty-eighth meeting, in the section for the Miami Valley CTC, there's the words lettering. Thank you for the board for lettering me. It should be letting me. And then also under the superintendent for professional development, there is something that says WPP, special ed students, and WPP is for gifted students. So those two updates have been changed. I have no other corrections.
There's no further discussion. We're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion carries. And so that will move on to the Treasury report. We have the monthly financial report. We need a motion to approve the monthly financial report for October twenty-nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Sam and Teresa. Anything you want to highlight, Dave, or?
Uh, just that, let me pull out my report here. Just that you'll notice that there was a new section after the graph that shows the month's activity over the past three years. They did add some activity for our new employee benefit self-insurance fund. And you can see how that is operating. The month of October was slow, as we expected, because claims are just starting to roll in. They have picked up in November. Overall, we're putting about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every month into that account between employer and employee premiums. As long as we're spending less than that, we're in the black and it's all good, so. I made a couple of notes. For November, claims have come in, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in November. There's still one, they come in every Wednesday. They tell us how much we've got. So there's still one more Wednesday this month, so again, if we stay below three fifty, we're good. And I'll continue to have that updated in all of our monthly reports. And you can also see on the final page, which is the financial statement, you can see for the Fund Twenty-four, month, receipts, month-to-date, year-to-date, monthly expenses, year-to-date expenses and ending cash balance. Just, anybody have any questions on that, other than that?
There was one question that I had about, it said that we had the district, under your bullet points for expenditure notes. It said, "The district also issued a true-up payment of thirty-four thousand to SIRs for fiscal year twenty-seventeen."
Twenty-seventeen?
Is that a title?
That is a title. I should say twenty-nineteen.
Okay, that makes sense now.
We wondered why it was, you know.
That far away.
Perfect, yeah.
Well, what's interesting is that earlier we talked about getting reimbursed for Medicaid, for workers, workers' comp was twenty-seventeen because they're so far behind.
That makes sense, right.
So you, and you jump that years all the time and we're being audited on twenty-eighteen for Medicaid, so. I'm always in the past, it seems, for those years. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Also on the seventy-five thousand dollars when we changed, so we, I thought we left our contract at the end of our contract. We still got charged seventy-five thousand dollars for what we mean?
We do. That's the closeout fee. Because there are still, there are still claims that will be coming in.
That's a lot.
And, well, I mean, if we just had a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, I mean, any claims that came in, they're still paying those and we're, we're done. So that's a, a final closeout fee that they charge to us, so.
Okay.
But.
And the monthly management fee was six thousand. Will that go up and down depending on?
For, no, the monthly man.
It's fifty-nine hundred.
It does, based on belly, or employees.
All right.
But it won't go, it won't change very much.
Okay.
No.
Because I was thinking if we're just getting started and it's fifty-nine hundred, that's a lot of money. Is it going to go up to, you know, ten thousand a month or eleven?
No, no, that's based on the number of employees that are in there.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to know.
We may go up one or two. I mean, open enrollment is done for the year. The only change you could have is if we have new employees kind of work for the district.
So it's basically six grand a month?
Yeah, pretty much. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
So is there any explanation or error for the water and electric charges? Because it's referencing like Corinne Cop for the two thousand seventeen. This is purchase service expenses for October eighteen, had nothing unusual at the timing of payments.
Correct.
October nineteen included the deferred September two thousand nineteen electric and water charges, that were up to forty-five thousand, as well as the normal October payment. Now we go back to talking about October seventeen.
Right, so eighteen was fine. Nineteen and seventeen were the, were the ones that were out of whack. So, and that was just because they paid the water and sewer bill for the normal month and the previous month. And then if you go to the last month's report, you'll notice where it says we're under.
Okay, so you're just showing that it's balancing out over the three year period. All right, thank you.
Following up on Teresa's question about the seventy-five thousand dollars. Is, will there be an accounting of that seventy-five thousand dollars or will it's just a flat seventy-five thousand, whether the expenses are ninety or?
Right, it, it is said and done. There is no, there's no true-up at the end to say, "Hey, well, we really, we really spent a hundred and fifty, you owe a hundred and fifty thousand more, eh, it costs fifty, we're going to give you back twenty-five thou-" It's just, this is what their fee is for the next three months and we've paid it and we're done.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? Here we go. We're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes. Item B, approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty appropriation amendments.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Sam and Teresa. Any discussion?
Pretty routine, just some local grant money that came in from the foundation. And then one more sport budget for athletics came in.
Okay, there's no further discussion. We're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Yes, that motion is approved. Item C, the alternative tax document format. Looking for a motion to approve a resolution declaring intention to proceed under the alternative tax document format provided under section fifty-seven oh five point two eight one of the Ohio revise code.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Joel and Sam. Any discussion?
We do, we do this every year. This is the format that Miami County has elected for us to do. And I recently met with the Miami County auditor for a Montgomery, for a Miami County Treasurers meeting and Treasurers are trying to convince him to do something even easier. Well, not that this is easy, it's coming up with a buzz for the entire year, but they're looking to do something less work-intensive. And I think he's this close to changing it for us, but for now, we're going to do a normal alternative tax budget like we do every. And that'll be approved at the January. And that'll be approved at the January meeting.
Sure. Okay, that's all the discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Item D, the approval of the, looking for a motion to approve the November two thousand nineteen five-year forecast.
I'll move, I'll second.
Moved and seconded, uh.
Everybody.
Corinne and Joelle.
Get the next one, Sam.
Any questions? Dave, any?
Uh, just really quick, uh, we're used to seeing this normally approved in October. However, the law was recently changed, so now they're six months apart. So, as we approve it, now we approve it in November, and we approve it in May. And, uh, so every six months, we'll approve the five-year forecast. This five-year forecast has been updated to include actual numbers for fiscal year nineteen, because it is now a year in the past. And we've updated our numbers, our, our tax revenue numbers have been updated based on estimates that we've heard from the Miami County Auditor's office. There was a reappraisal year this year, uh, they do it once every six years. And so far, Miami County Auditor's suggested that Miami County overall saw a twenty percent increase in tax values for commercial and residential. It isn't official yet, they said the numbers, they'll be known in mid-December, because the state still needs to review and approve the final changes. So, mid-December, we should know if our district continues to qualify as a special needs district. The special needs designation allows us to take out more debt if needed than the normal nine percent of our tax valuation. However, they've stated that Tip City may have actually seen more of a thirty percent increase than the twenty percent. So, yeah, if you just use a twenty percent, which is a, a conservative estimate, from what I've heard, that takes our valuation from four hundred and ten million to four hundred and ninety-three million. So, good news for our special needs designation. So, that's one thing that we're seeing in this, we're using the latest estimate. And we've also got, the healthcare numbers have helped us. We were able to, because we took on a sixteen percent increase instead of a twenty-six percent increase, we were able to reduce our expected healthcare costs, about three hundred thousand dollars from what our last five-year forecast presented. So, that helps us. Hopefully, everything works out, and this is a great program, and we can see more savings, realized savings that we can carry on in the future years when it comes to, uh, not increasing the premiums so much compared, again, the EPC, twenty-six percent increase for most of their members, so.
What kind of projections did you put in for the next four years for healthcare increases?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but, give me one moment, Sam, I can find that very quickly in the five-year forecast. So, right now, um, we have an eight percent increase for fiscal year twenty-two, and then we're back, we're still using a twelve percent for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Thank you.
The other thing that's interesting with this, well, not interesting, you'll notice in this forecast, there is no renewal levy in the next five years. So, um, we, normally, you are not allowed to include renewal levies in your revenues. In the top of the report, you have to show them separately because there's a chance they might not renew.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are good through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So, for now, that's just that we, we, we do have a good outlook over the next five years. We do still have a positive balance, although expenditures do start exceeding revenues. Starting in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we have a back cash balance that can handle those excess expenses. Hopefully, when we get our building situation taken care of, we'll still have a few years where we can focus on maybe running some emergency levy renewals as substitute continuing. And, uh, and being able to convert those levies to substitute continuing levies, that's, uh, something that other districts are currently trying to do. A good thing about the substitute levies is that they will, uh, bring on the new construction into the district and help those levies grow as the district grows, rather than just stay at the same level as it was approved fifteen to twenty years ago. Even though you may have more kids, you're still collecting the same amount of money, so.
And the debt for the high school is reflected in here?
The debt for the, the debt for the high school is actually paid out of the O-O-T two fund. That is not in this. However, that will be paid off by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, so, we're getting there, we're getting there. Any other questions that I might be able to address to the five-year forecast?
All right, hearing done, we're ready for a vote.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
I will be submitting this to the state tomorrow.
Uh, item E, approval of the following transfer, fifteen thousand dollar transfer from the O-one general fund to the eighteen-nine thousand wellness incentive fund.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, Sam and Corinne, any discussion? I didn't read all of that, but if, yeah, describe a little bit what that is.
Sure, so the Bureau of Workers' Comp, uh, we pay a month, an annual premium every year. I believe the premium last year was sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, because of, uh, safety measures that have been put in place, and other things, investing, Bureau of Workers' Comp did not spend what they took in from us. So, they provided a one billion dollar rebate to employee, employers. And, uh, so for us, it was fifty-five or eighty percent, eighty-eight percent of our money came back. And, uh, one of the things that they suggest that school districts and other employers do is put that money into their wellness fund, which also promotes safety and health for districts. And so, we've done this transfer before. This was actually a transfer that was included in our original budget for this fiscal year. So, we're just approving that transfer from the VWC rebate money into our wellness fund.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Item F, approval to reimburse board members for expenses incurred, incurred while attending the two thousand nineteen O-H-I-O School Association Capital Conference as per Board Policy zero-one-four-seven.
I'll move, second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Corinne and Teresa, any discussion?
Just thank you for board members that were able to provide me with their documentation.
All right, there's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Okay, that concludes the Treasury report, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Item seven is old business, there's no old business on the agenda, so we will move on to new business. And for that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cal.
Under new business, item A, resignations, recommend approval to accept the following resignation as per the agenda.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Teresa, any discussion?
I have a question, um, now that we have Patel coming in, or what, what's your thought process on replacing this position?
I need to have that position replaced in January, I can't wait until April. So, it'll just be part of the, the job analysis, and we'll go with what Patel, we'll, we'll see if the board wants to do what Patel's recommendations might be for that position.
Okay.
So, uh, we are, as a fiscal office, we, we are in line to receive the state's new accounting software. The state has been on an old antiquated DOS system, uh, for years and years and years. And so, they've started to roll out a new web-based accounting system. We're, we're considered wave five, and, uh, there are thirty districts in the meta-area that are going to be moving to the new accounting system. So, I've heard good things about it, I've heard some, you know, people complaining about reports, but, you know, if we don't do it now, we'll be forced to do it in two years, so, yeah, we, we thought we'd jump on. And, and I've asked about the changeover from, for an accounts payable clerk during that time, and meta-representatives say that's the best time for somebody to learn it, so.
Thank you.
Will that new system replace or, or change our monthly financial reports that we're giving, or?
It will still look the same, uh, but we should, we, we will have better ability to do queries, and we can pull down more information and create our own custom reports rather than taking the reports that are just canned. So, that's what's, that's what some of the issues are right now. People are asking for the old reports that they're used to seeing, and they just haven't been created yet. So, those are currently being churned out left and right by meta. And, uh, so, we'll still see a, a report that we're used to seeing, and we can add additional items too, if we'd like, so.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, there's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval to employ the following as classified staff or the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year pending proper certification paperwork as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Joelle and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing done, we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the following volunteer positions pending proper, pending verification of proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve by Joelle and seconded by Corinne, any discussion? Hearing done, we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item D, recommend approval for the following certified teachers to also be home instruction tutors as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing done, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Recommend approval to employ the following for athletic service for the two thousand nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as per the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion seconded, Sam and Corinne. Hearing no discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item F, recommend approval to employ the following substitute position for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year pending proper certification and paperwork whose K-Hil as a substitute date.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion? We're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item G, recommend approval to pay the athletic director for services performed during Ohio High School Athletic Association, O-H-S-A-A, athletic tournaments as deemed necessary by the high school principal. Compensation we paid at the rate recommended by the O-H-S-A-A is not a part of the A.D.'s regular contract salary.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Joelle. Any discussion?
Uh, this is to help us in case there is someone that does not come forward to, to cover it.
Sure.
And that we would be hosting it, so we definitely need someone as a side person.
Gotcha.
All right, there's no further discussion, ready for a vote, Dave?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item H, recommend approval of the following overnight and out-of-state trips. That's our AP history, Gettysburg trip on December the fifth through December the eighth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Sam, any discussion? We're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes.
Item I, recommend approval to accept two hundred and forty dollars in grant dollars from STEAM boosters.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Sam. Any discussion?
Uh, this is to cover a math count registration for our middle school, and we always appreciate the STEAM boosters', uh, support. And I think that they've changed their title to STEAM.
Yeah, they did, two years ago.
Yeah, from STEAM to STEM.
They added the A and math. It's still Dr. English, though, so.
That's it.
Yeah, same person. He got fancy on us, I think.
All right, we're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item J, recommend approval to accept the following donation, seventy-five thousand dollars annual dispersment for our partnership between Tip City Schools and Premier Health Upper Valley Medical Center.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Joelle and Corinne, any discussion?
I have a question, Dave.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd be shocked if I didn't have a question on this, but, um, I've been very vocal about getting information on Tip Pride. And so, maybe, um, in light of what Kathy was saying in citizen comments, can you just give us a quick update? The waters are very muddied on this.
Sure.
Where are we with this? It's confusing to everybody, including myself, and I'm a board member, and I'm very confused, and I've been on this board four years.
Uh, from what I understand, uh, this project, Tip Pride was, uh, formed to help fund, fundraise for the stadium project because we needed everything there. Phase one included the new turf and concrete work at the stadium, and the board agreed to help fund the turf project, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was our portion, ten years of premier health money. According to the premier health contract, the funding has to be used for, uh, athletic facilities.
Correct.
That's what it states, athletic facilities.
Yeah, we all read the contract on that.
And so, every, every year when we receive our seventy-five thousand dollar check, I'll advance, return the advance, the general fund originally paid, out of the O-O-T two fund back into the O-O-one fund. So, I believe, Gary, you might have to help me if I'm wrong, phase one was one point one million dollars. Uh, one point one million dollars to do that concrete work in the turf, of which we paid seven hundred and fifty thousand using the premier health money. Uh, phase two was, I wanna say between eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was for the new concession stands and restrooms. That was completely funded by the city of Tip City. Um, city, city of Tip City put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was for restrooms because they use the restrooms for the park as well. So, we share those services. The remainder of the money for that phase two was raised by Tip Pride Association, and that was through, uh, advertising agreements, uh, at the stadium, naming right agreements for different areas of the stadium. The school district has only paid the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was for the turf. We did put in some barbed wire fencing to protect the investment that's going on in there. And then there was an electrical panel upgrade in this new, um, uh, the new concession stand to make sure it could handle the electric, the electric draw that's needed in there. And that was paid for using a donation that we received, uh, and for, specifically for the, the stadium. The Tip City, city of Tip City provided the district with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were just a pass-through agent in and out. Phase two, phase one and two are fully funded. I've been told that TPA has all of the donations that they need over the next ten years to fund those. And, um, I don't know about phase three, if that will ever happen. That is for locker rooms and, it should be for new stands, locker rooms.
Scoreboard.
And scoreboard, correct, yeah. Um, if that happens, I don't know, so, depends on TPA- Um, if that happens, I don't know, so, depends on TPA.
So I agree with everything, you know, that you stated, I think the confusion comes in, um, two, two places. The first is they, the original purpose of this group was to be a fundraising agent. So, and, and also, one of the agreements that we made with them is they would come in every month and present to us a financial bank statement, which that hasn't happened. So there are community members who come to us for, you know, to ask us questions, because they associate us with TIP Pride, we are the school, and we don't have any financial information to give. So I'm wondering if with the new board members coming on in January, if it would be good for the new board, you know, for us all to sit down with the original TIP Pride contract and just kind of go over it as a new group, and just, I, there needs to be some kind of line drawn, or, a lot of things have changed, and we haven't gotten the things that we were supposed to get, and that makes it very confusing, it puts us in a bad situation, because the community is not trusting us, and, you know, for Kathy to come up here and say none of the board members care, I actually take that very personally, because I. It's okay, I mean, hey, I'm a board member, I get beat up all day long.
As a whole, I suppose.
I mean, that's part of my job, that's, that comes with the territory, but you know that I've been very vocal about trying to get information on, and I have not gotten information. I have asked for bank statements, I haven't gotten them. I have asked, what's the collateral, there's no answer. So it's not just you, I can't get the answers either, and I don't like being put in that position, because it makes us, it, then it brings in this whole trust, transparency. It's not fair to me, and it's not fair to any of you guys, and it needs to stop, and it needs to end, and we need to be very clear on what our association is with this organization, because I'm, I'm done with it, I'm tired of these kinds of questions, it's not fair to any of us, and there needs to be some answers. I don't know if we need to bring Dave Lampy in, but it needs, it's, I'm done with the mud, it needs to be cleared up, that's what I'm saying. I'm trying, Kathy.
Very well put.
I, I haven't been very, I have not been successful, but I have been trying.
I haven't either.
Okay.
Has there been any official reach to them to ask them to?
Oh, yes, there has.
Recently to do a presentation to us, I know that you've asked repeatedly to ask for this.
How we get, style control working, we're voting on a, whether to accept this money from Premier Health, that's the motion on the table.
True.
Uh, we're going way afield, way afar than that, so, I think that's certainly a good thing to do, to, to bring them in.
Yeah.
Have an update, maybe the next meeting or sometimes, sometime soon.
Just the clarification.
They have a, have a chance to respond to this, too.
Well, we emailed and there's no response, so.
Well, I've been told that, but there could be a response to that accusation, so let's wait till they're here, and then we can deal with it, okay?
I've been told that they've tried to set up meetings, and they just haven't been able to occur with you and Mrs. Dahl.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna meet with them.
Oh, yeah, that was like last June.
Yeah, but all we get is this piece of paper, and we're supposed to get a statement every month, so it's, it's a bunch of finger pointing, which is exactly what your point is, I'm done with the finger pointing. Let's just get everything on the table and be done with it. It's pretty simple, we have a contract, are they meeting the contract, yes or no, this is black and white.
That's true, but we should remember, they're also a group that's volunteering to help raise money, you know, and, and so.
That's the question, is where's the money, I guess that's the question.
They've just said they've, they've got enough to finish phase two, so.
I haven't seen that on the bank statement, so, that's, that's where it becomes money.
All right.
But to regroup, this board agreed to move that seven hundred and fifty thousand through each year to apply it towards phase one, and that's what we're voting on.
Right, well, we're voting on just receiving the seventy-five.
Just the seventy-five thousand provision, yeah.
Just to receive it, which I assume nobody wants to refuse it, so. All right, take a ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
And I want to thank Premier Health and Upper Valley Medical Center for their donation, seventy-five thousand dollars. All right, and their partnership with our district. Item K, recommend approval of the following donation, additional estate distributions from Joseph Barnett Estate. Barnhart, excuse me, Joseph Barnhart Estate and Family, bringing the total to fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-five cents donated, donated to TIP City High School.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Oh.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion?
Any idea of what the funds are gonna be spent on?
Oh, that's a fun question, yeah. Ooh.
It's, uh.
Call Mr. Sink.
It, it is a lot of money, and, uh, very generous.
Yeah, it's fun, very generous.
Very generous.
You can do some great things with that.
I was able to see a final dispersment of his entire estate, and the gentleman loved his community.
That's awesome, that's wonderful.
And, um, there were other groups that benefited much more than TIP City Schools.
Good for him.
So it is an amazing thing to see, I would love to be able to do the same when it's my time.
I agree.
What an amazing, what an amazing family.
I can donate to TIP Pride.
All right, there's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item L, recommend approval to accept the, the acceptance of the following donation, five hundred dollars, earmarked for purchase of student basic needs as deemed appropriate by administration.
I'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded, Corinne and Teresa, any discussion?
And this donation is from one eight-eight-eight Ohio Comp, and I'll let you kind of say who that is.
Uh, they're the group, they're our third-party administrator for workers' compensation, and this is the third year that they've provided this donation to us. I think we, we purchased the Bearline costume with part of these funds, uh, two years ago, last year, I believe, we, we purchased some, um, items needed for students. There's accidents in, while they're here at school, uh, this year, where we've got a small group that's looking into what we can do with five hundred dollars for student needs as well. Very appreciative. All right, can you find that phone number? It's not their phone number. It's very confusing.
What's going on up here? Did you finally get Corinne's computer?
No, this is, this computer being over here.
I thought you, I was looking.
I was hoping it was this one, it's not.
And I said, oh my gosh, it only took two hours, it finally figured it out.
Sam, can you can double tap that screen right there, that little box in the center?
This one here?
Yep.
I did not catch him in motion, so.
I've got that, Dahl and Dunaway, thank you, Sam.
Ready for a vote?
Yep, ready for a vote.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
All right, item M, approval, recommend approval of the new revised deleted policies and guidelines as presented in the October board meeting. This would be, this is the second reading.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
Is this your committee, Corinne?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
All right. All right, there's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Okay, that concludes the, uh, new business, on to miscellaneous. Uh, the next meeting, uh, we have a special meeting on Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty nineteen, here at the Board of Education Office, six o'clock. The next regular board meeting will take place Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, here at the Board Office at six o'clock. Uh, there will be a records commission and annual organizational meeting, uh, Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty, at the Board of Education Office. That starts at five forty-five, that's the records and organ, annual organization, I'm sorry, that's the record commission meeting at five forty-five, and then six o'clock, the organizational meeting starts, so. So that's the upcoming meetings, uh, next item is an executive session, so we entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six, and O-R-C one-two-one-point-two-two-G-one and G-two through six and eight, to consider, uh, the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employer official, and to consider matters acquired to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Teresa and Corinne, on, well.
I.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. We'll take a, oh, do not anticipate any action. About a five-minute break, and.